I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Aransas State City Council, August 15, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Heavenly Father, once again, we gather to do the business of the citizens of this fine community. We ask that you give us, all the people in this room, direction to do your work and do the citizens' work to the best of our ability. You've given us a major responsibility, and we appreciate that, and we'll do our best to meet those duties and those responsibilities. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Applause.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we're going to go into the presentations and proclamations, which is the quarterly update on collection of municipal court fees and fines with Stephen Southsaddle from Lightburg-Lawhorn.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, city staff. Thank you for having me here today. Just a moment, I'm going to pass out a copy of our latest delinquent collection report. What I've just handed to the council is our most recent quarterly report on our activity to date for collecting your delinquent municipal court fees and fines. As you can see on the piece of paper that you have before you now, we sent out 257 letters. We updated 2,156 counts, driver's licenses of people who received violations in your city, yet who had incorrect data on their driver's license. And so we're able to verify who they were and update those materials. We have 391 outbound calls and eight inbound calls. For the total amount collected at the bottom is, for this quarter, is $43,284. The larger figure above it, the amount assigned, that's what was directed to us to collect for the next time. So generally speaking, the amount assigned affects what we're going to get in the future. But if the council has any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer. With me is Gracie Torres, who is the manager of this account for the municipal court liaison. And also with me tonight, Glenda Geta. She helps me with the tax side of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we're going to go to summary of proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget and capital improvement plan between Gary Edwards, the city manager, and Sandra Garcia, my director.
Mr. Mayor and council, let me begin this, and then Sandra will go into some more detail. But this goes into a little more detail than the last, and we'll continue to go into more detail as we give presentations to you. And there are, there's a number of bits of new information for you in this particular report. The fund balance for the general fund still is very high at this point. However, keep in mind that we have not included any potential cost of living in there also, so that would impact it. And we're looking at some specific possible reductions that we are going to do or recommend anyway. And with that background, Sandra wants to give an overview of all the work that her and her department's been doing for the FY '23 budget. Sandra?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Gary. Good evening. Do you want to get my presentation? There we go. I gave you all a pass out, a handout right now this afternoon. We'll go to the second page. The second page is a breakdown of all the capital outlay purchases that we're wanting to do. There you go. Okay. So I presented this last month, I think about a couple of weeks ago, and we wanted a breakdown. You all required a breakdown as to what we wanted to do with the money. We're proposing still to issue debt, whether it's a form of a bond or a tax note, something short term, more than likely like a tax note, a five-year note that we would be able to pay off in five years, to purchase all the equipment listed below. It's about $1.1 million. That's where we stand right now. And it tells you the departments, about 741,000 of that is going to be for the general fund. 22,000 is going to be for the harbor. 31,316,500 is going to be for the water and sewer fund. And 25,000 of that money is going to be for the Aquatics Center. It's for a total of $1,105,124. That's what we're proposing. That's the capital outlay that the departments have requested in their budget, and that's what we're proposing to keep and to issue some debt for. Do you all have any questions for that? No? Okay. So then if we turn the page, we're going to go to the capital improvement project. This is going to list the capital outlay that was just detailed in the page before this, and it's also going to list all the projects that the Public Works Department is working on and the Aquatics Center. So it goes into much detail, like it'll start, you start with the IT refresh, you start with the police department, then the police department, streets and drainage. They're going to be, they're wanting to purchase some decorative streetlights for the downtown area, some street overlays, they're thinking of doing Gillespie, ransom, 10th Street, Beasley and Guile on the street overlay, some procurements for the emergency management, procurements for security for the access doors for the citywide, some cameras. The fire department is needing some equipment. The mowing department, which used to be called the Parks and Recs Department, now is being called the mowing department. The sewer collection, which is the utility wastewater, is requesting. So at the bottom of that page, you start with the projects. You're going to see the Sherwood Forest project, the backup generators, the projects that we're doing with the ARPA funding that we received from the federal government. We still have one last FEMA project, which is that one that's listed at the very end, which is the citywide pumps and metal buildings. So it'll tell you under the column 23 what the costs are. And then if you look to the right-hand side under funding, it will tell you whether it's a grant, whether it's FEMA, whether it's bond, meaning that we already have those funds available to us, or if it's part of the proposed tax note slash bond that we're proposing, the 1.1 that we just discussed. It'll tell you, or if it's coming from a fund, if it's coming from fund balance, from any particular fund. It'll give you the breakdown where the funding source for those line items are going to be. So if you turn the page, it'll give you the last couple of items that are going to be in the capital improvement. So they're looking, we're looking at a capital improvement projects in the amount of $7.7 million. And the funding of that three and a half million is going to be coming from grants. 700,000 is going to be coming from FEMA. We have about $2.9 million already in bonds that we've issued for funding some of those programs. And about almost 600,000 is going to be coming from fund balance, and that's going to be from the water and sewer fund. That's going to be, that's where that money is going to be for those projects that are water and sewer related. That's where that money is going to be coming from. Okay? Any questions on that? No? Okay. The last page, well, second to the last, the following page is a summary by funds. It gives you the breakdown of all the funds that we have. Obviously, we try to concentrate and look at what our general fund balance, what we have in the general fund, and the wastewater fund, wastewater and sewer funds. The general fund balance, we're still looking, we're still looking at drawing down that balance by 216,000. Even with that drawdown, like Mr. Edwards said earlier at the beginning of the presentation, our fund balance is still very healthy. It's going to be at 39.40% is what we're at, more or less. But also, keep in mind, like he said, this does not include any COLA or any cost of living adjustment to our staff. In the general fund, we have several positions that the departments are requesting. We have three patrol officers, two firefighters, one part-time animal control, and the two parks and recs people that are going to be for the new parks and recs department that we are creating that will be under Caitlin. And those are the two new people that she's requesting to run her park, the parks and recs. So under the water and sewer fund, we also have two new positions that are being requested. There are two utility tax that they're going to, that David has requested for his department. And you'll see that the utility fund is going to have, has a positive anticipated change of 755,000, which is an increase. We're still looking at the Aquatics Center. We're going to be working on that some more. That still has a deficit of 202,000. Obviously, that money has to come from one of the other funds. So we really need to work on that budget a little bit more to tighten those numbers up, because either the general fund or the water sewer fund or the harbor fund has to kick in that money to make that a zero fund balance change for that fund. Do you all have any questions at this time for me of any of the funds, any of the information presented? So in summary, if there's no questions, we're looking at anticipated revenues of about $24 million, anticipated expenditures at about 23.2 million. The general fund balance is going to be, oh, that is a typo. It's supposed to be 4,565,476,45 million. Sorry about that. That's, yeah. Debt would have to be issued to go ahead and do the capital outlay that the departments are requesting. We're proposing the tax rate still at 77 cents. The current tax rate is at 78 cents. That would be a decrease of slightly over a penny for the taxpayers. Do you all, did you get my information about, okay?
Yes, I guess that'd be my only question. I was going to come in and ask for the moon about the tax rate, but is there any way possible to... to we could cut in about 80,000 or maybe a little hair over to get the tax rate at 76 cents even?
Well, that's something we can look at.
If you want to speak, you want to come up to the podium? State your name and address for the record.
City doesn't have to comply with Texas Senate Bill Two for the no new revenue. In two years or one and three quarters years, City of Aransas Pass has increased the property taxes 23.73%, 1.2 million dollars you're taking from your taxpayers. The issue that I have with that, I mean, I sent the information last year when it came up to the Texas Comptroller, thinking they would be the ones to enforce that. You know why in '21, San Francisco County could publish the the rates and show what the no new revenue rate is supposed to be based on Senate Bill Two, and then immediately charged 15% more than that?
Well, that's where you said the county.
Basically, Texas Comptroller said, well, it's because of disaster. What disaster did we have last year? Well, they said, well, Governor Abbott from the freeze declared it a disaster. So basically, what that means is we get nothing out of the disaster, other than a higher tax rate from all the property tax owners. To me, that just seems crazy. I know everybody thinks it's good, you know, the governor gave us a disaster, you know. Well, basically, all it means is we've all got to put pitch in more money, you know, to cover this. So, I mean, basically, the the city got an extra 1.2 million dollars.
Well, I agree with you, the tax rate's high, but the big problem is, like you said, it's the county.
I mean, the big issue, Jason, is that you look at what the county appraisal district is doing. They've just gone crazy with these things. And basically, y'all are reaping the benefits of that. You know, I kept thinking, okay, it's going to be good that, okay, they raise these, they're trying to get things more in line. So the rate will go down. We're getting all this extra taxable base now, you know, they're going to bring the tax rate. And not happening. I mean, that's just wrong. Basically, you're taking advantage of all the property owners by taking these property taxes up. You know, mine went up 50%. Unfortunately, I bought just at the wrong time, so it said, well, you're just basically screwed.
Yeah, and that's that.
The home.
The one hiking ups the county appraisal district.
And the homestead exemption's only $5,000. That's embarrassing. This city can only afford to give over 65 homestead people $5,000 off. Y'all are the lowest one of any of the cities in the county. Anyway, I just had to speak my piece on that one because obviously, even 77, 76 is way above where the no new revenue rate would be based on what the taxable value is taken up to from the county appraisal district. I appreciate your time.
Any other questions?
So we will look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to go to public hearings, which is, I'm going to open up public hearing for case number PG 2208-14 on request for, a request by Arasmo Nunez for a conditional use permit to operate a bait shop, a bait shop on his property located at 1041 North Commercial Street, Aransas Pass, Texas, block 786, lot 1-4. In Aransas Pass, Texas, the property is currently zone GB, which is general business district.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. This application was heard last week, the eighth, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the applicant is requesting to put a bait shop. If you see the PowerPoint, the location is right across from where the, let me say, the RV park is going to go, Fallows Property, opposite that location. And so he is requesting, this is a conditional use permit, because in a GB zone, general business zone, the bait shop are conditional use permits, and therefore, it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the city council final. When it went to the P and Z, some of the conditions that were considered to be looked at was the the odor. So that was what was came up very strongly, that the applicant be very particular about how to control odor. And so under those conditions, it was stated that the wastewater from the tanks will have to be disposed into the existing onsite sanitary sewer system. So it should not be poured on the property. It has to go through the sanitary sewer system to take charge of it. And also, there should not be any wastewater of fish that will be disposed into the adjacent drainage ditch. There's a drainage ditch beside it that the county and city takes control of that, so it should not be used by the applicant. Also, there has to be adequate odor suppression of the operation that will be implemented at all times. It has to be followed, that the odor suppression operation. The applicant must make sure that the odor that may come, maybe not, but if any, it has to be suppressed as much as possible. And so the proper disposal of dead specimens, if any, will have to be maintained at all times that will, which will also prevent public health and safety concerns, including this odor suppression. The applicant is here, and if you have any questions here, he will be able to answer for you. Thank you.
I have a question as far as you, you said that they were going to go through the sewer system. You said something about the sewer system.
Yeah.
On some of that, the sewer system?
The, the, any, any wastewater, any top, any water that goes waste should be directed through the, that.
Okay. Did the Public Works have any issues with that? Have they looked into that?
Yes, they recommended that they have to make sure it goes through there rather than any other.
Just kind of.
Which one?
I'm just kind of concerned about that, going through the sewer system when you're, you know, getting rid of that type of, you know, waste. I'm just, that's just my concern also. Another another concern that I have is, did we, did we look at the traffic? You know, because they're coming in with, I'm thinking boats pulling into that area. I, and that's just what I'm thinking, because that right there is a busy area, you know, when you're coming in from Rockport, the curb coming around there, that's kind of a busy area right there. So did you look at the traffic pattern or what's what's going to happen with that?
We sent any command request from police department that take charge of the traffic, and they're okay with it.
Okay. What was the vote for P and C? Was it unanimous?
Yes, unanimous.
It was unanimous.
And it is just, just right after the red light there at staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, yep.
Move the side, on the right side of the.
Yeah.
Right.
It would be to the right. Yep.
Is she going out toward Rockport right there?
Correct.
Any questions for the public? You want to come up to the podium, sir? If you, if you want to speak, you need to come up to the podium.
Thanks, Eric.
I'm just asking on wastewater recycling, we talk about everything that's, oh, Robert Finch, I'm sorry. All the water through all the tanks, like typically, you see them on the, you know, the harbor side where, you know, water's going back out of the harbor. Are they dumping all that water that's running through these tanks with shrimp and fish and stuff into the sanitary sewer system?
That's my question to him.
So this water is not any water that is contaminated or something like that. So it's just a clear water that is contained in the tank. If it gets dirty, the applicant may change it, but it should not cause any negative impact at all.
How many tanks are you going to have on that property? Two tanks? And the size of those tanks?
You want to come up? You want to come up to the podium?
500 each?
It'll probably be 1,000 gallons, 500 gallons each tank. But the water is not going to be disposed anywhere. It's going to go to the sewer, and it's going to be clean water. We're going to keep the water rotating.
Okay, so you're not just dumping the tank and then refilling the tank.
No, not at all.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Just recirculate the water.
Yeah, it's recirculating, exactly.
The water is being recirculated, and that's it.
Yep.
Have you operated this type of business before?
Ma'am, no. I do, I, I'm a construction person. I can build you a house or hotel, motel, whatever. That's what I do for a living. But this, I'm a, I'm already getting old. And that's what I want to do.
A little retirement fund.
Retirement fund, yes, ma'am.
Well, it's a good location for one.
Yes. I've been putting a lot of money into it, and I'm not going to waste it. I like to do what I want to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I declare this public hearing closed? And we're going to go to consider enact an ordinance for a conditional use permit requested by Arasmo Nunez to operate a bait stand shop on his property located at 1041 North Commercial Street, Aransas Pass, Texas, block 786, lots 1 through 4 in Aransas Pass, Texas. The property is currently zone GB, which is general business district.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit by, to operate a bait shop at 1041 North Commercial, applied by, oh, I don't see the name, Arasmo Nunez.
Second.
In favor?
And wife.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was the current address on that, 1021 or 1041?
41. 1041.
1041.
Did I say it wrong?
No. You set it correctly.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to the city manager, and we're going to take 71 out, 72 out, and we're going to go to 73.
We'll take the choice.
Which is consider enact a resolution approving tax sale property suite number S-09-1327TX, account number 35846, tract number three, lot 19, block 314, original town site, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, located on South Saunders. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gottlieb LLC in the amount of $350.
Number is this? 35846?
35976.
No, 35846, right?
Which one are we looking at?
We're doing 73, correct?
You're on 73.
73, we're on 73.
We can't get these to come up.
That's what I said, 73.
Mary, we can't get these to come up so that we can see the info on them.
Does it work for 3 and 5 to that? Um, yeah, but look at this.
But it's got a little link.
I have it together. Um, this is just a submission. I have a question for Melinda. Melinda, on this one, after doing some research, the city owns a couple of lots right adjacent to that.
Oh, send them down, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Take one, press down.
On 73, staff, I know it's up to act on, but staff is going to suggest that you table this with the others for now. There's some other information we need to look at related to this one.
Okay. So this one's, we're going to table this, okay? Start your questions.
So we're going to go to 74.
We're going to table it.
We'll need a motion to table.
I make a motion that we table, what do we table? Tax sale property, suit number S-09-132T, uh, 1327TX, account number 35846, tract number three, lot 19, block 314. Original town site, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, located on South Saunders. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gottlieb LLC in the amount of 350.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to 74, which is consider enact a resolution approving tax
sale property suite numbers S-11-1004TX, account number 35976, lot 9, block 355, town of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, located on South Saunders. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gottlieb LLC in the amount of $350.
This one is open for, this one is open for discussion if you wish.
Can we discuss this after?
Um, yeah. No, because the other one was tabled. I had some questions on that one.
Okay, great.
On this south, on this one here.
Do you have an extra copy? I'm looking. I printed them, that's all.
On my computer at home, all of these would come up, so you could see the maps and you could see everything. I can't get anything here, so it's going to be very difficult for me to. Right.
Yeah. I have that, that's perfect. That's just good. On this particular one, I know that the percentage is 20, I mean, what he's going to, because I know one of the things that we had requested, that if it had water and sewer.
75.
We wanted at least that 75% of what was owed on that.
See, we don't even have the addresses.
Because of water and sewer on the streets.
Otherwise 50.
Otherwise 50 is what we were looking at. So I'm, I make a motion on this one to deny it just based on that, because this particular one has water and sewer close by, and and they're just, the bid is $350, that's, that's like a slap in the face to us. And we don't get anything. So I'm just, I make a motion to deny it.
The only thing to keep in mind, all that, can't argue with anything that was said there, the only thing to keep in mind is this particular firm has a good reputation for building this community. They do buy low, but they put a significant amount of property tax back into the property with building of houses, just making you aware of that.
I, I, you know, I think we do for one, we need to do for the other. We have to be fair across the board, in my opinion.
Okay. I was giving you the history of that company.
I understand.
Um, do we know if there are any liens on these properties?
I made a motion.
You made a motion to deny.
Yeah, you make a motion, okay. I don't mind.
Is there a second? I'm just, you have not a pause.
Do you have another second? The motion dies for a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so favorable counsel? Any questions?
It just does, yeah.
So, without having the maps in front of us, this is the one that's on South Saunders. There's not a, there's not a street there. It's not an improved street.
It has water and sewer on this property. That's what made me, that's why I was going to question this one.
Do you see some, do you see a map?
I can't, I can't.
You just remember that from the.
Yeah, I can't open those.
Hmm, okay. We should be able to open these links, and we're not being able.
Okay, this is my book, and you can see, doesn't show them.
Okay, yeah, this is the one here, this is South Saunders that doesn't continue through. Okay. Greenwood. Okay.
Here's an extra book that you can ship. He just, nobody gets any money, he gets the basic property. Yes, he does the last, and we know that he is a good.
Here's some additional information.
74 is what we're looking at.
Just let him know that.
Here's some additional information on this one.
Okay. Oh, okay, there you go.
Mary, is that the correct picture?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that, that helps, yes. So what did you say about it, Jan, there is water or?
It says it has water and sewer. And I do know that.
Maybe nearby, huh?
Well, it says water and sewers. Yeah, it has access to it. My thing for selling this lot at three hundred and fifty dollars is the city gets nothing, the school district gets nothing, and San Pat gets nothing, yet there are, you know, um, we should be do something. I, I do want him to build homes. He has a good reputation within our city and I do know that.
I mean, I, I'm, agree with you a hundred percent on that. Three hundred and fifty dollars is a ridiculous amount.
But he is going to build on it and the city will.
And he's not here to tell us when he would start that process, do we know?
Uh, I can't answer that, do not know.
He's usually pretty quick once the property is released to him, and I do know that. He's been pretty consistent on that. Are there any other liens on this property that he would have to pay? Do we know that? Steve? Are there any other liens on this property that he would have to pay before he gets, um?
No, this one does not have city liens on it.
No liens?
No liens.
I wish he were here to tell us when he'd start building.
Because one of the things, as we recall as the council, we came up with these seventy-five if there's water and sewer close by.
Yep.
And fifty percent if there's not. So if we're going to not abide by that, then we just need to strike them off and people can give us a hundred dollars.
That's what I, I don't like.
And that's, that is what I am not in favor of, because people are paying dearly to have the water and sewer and they were just giving these lots away, basically.
And we don't have any more land.
And that's just my.
No more land here.
Mayor, may I ask Steve a question on this? Was he outbid, Steve, was he outbid on this particular one or is this one accurate as it stands?
This is, he's the only bidder on this.
Okay, thank, okay, just wanna make that clear.
I move to approve tax sale property suit number S dash eleven-dash-one-zero-zero-four-TX, account number three-five-nine-seven-six, lot nine, block three-fifty-five, town of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, located on South Saunders. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gothliff LLC in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May.
Did you vote? Um, I haven't voted because if we sold it seventy-five percent, it would be about seven hundred and fifty dollars versus three hundred and fifty. I'll say aye. Not comfortable with it, but I'll say aye.
He said aye.
We're gonna go to seven-seven. Which is consider an act and resolution approving the tax sale property suite number S dash thirteen-dash-one-zero-three-eight-TX, account number five-three-zero-four-six, tract number one, lot nine, block two-three-six, town of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, Texas, located on North Tenth Street. A bid offer was submitted by Cooper Gothliff LLC in the amount of three hundred and ninety dollars.
And this one has no water and no sewer.
It's supposed to be at fifty percent. According to what we said as a council.
Where's this one, on Tenth Street?
North Tenth.
North Tenth.
And if I may ask Steve again, on this one, is, uh, is this correct or was he outbid on this?
He's the only bidder on this.
Okay, thank you. There's some situations where, uh, what you see on here, they were outbid, so, okay.
Any liens on this property? That he'll have to clean?
No reasons.
And this one, he can't build right away on anyway. It has no water, no sewer, according to this. So he will buy it, he will sit on it, and he may turn it over.
Counsel, I'm aye. Hector Reels, ten forty-four South Commercial, I'm in total agreement with Ms. Vicki. We've gone over this several meetings that y'all were gonna stick to a fifty-seventy-five and that was it. And we've said it in the past, it's on public record and I think you should kinda stick to what you've already said. And that would make a great birding sanctuary, I'm just saying.
Favor of the council?
I'm gonna make a motion that we deny, um, suit number S dash thirteen-dash-one-zero-three-eight-TX, tract number one, account number five-three-zero-four-six, lot nine, block two-three-six, town of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, according to the map for plat thereof, recorded in volume two, page ten, map records of, uh, San Pat County.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now we're gonna go to seven-nine.
For the record, on this item, Councilmember Scruggs has filed a, um, conflict of interest, so she will not be participating or voting on this item.
Which is this one?
Okay, we're gonna go to consider an act on resolution approving the tax resale, tax sale property suite number S dash nineteen-dash-one-zero-five-one-TX, account number seven-three-one-two-five, lots two, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, block six, Depricks Edition, City of Aransas Pass, San Patricio County, located at eleven forty-four South Orange. A bid offer was submitted by Kerry Scruggs in the amount of thirty-six thousand.
Mayor, if you may, if I may, um, I have some updated information on the, on the value of property.
That's the twenty-twenty-two value. It is reflected in the packet that my law has sent to you earlier.
And to let you know, there is a, there is a property on this, there is a home on this property, but it has to be totally demolished. It's not, yeah, exactly. So whenever, whatever she bids here, and I did call her and question her on this, why her bid was higher than the amounts due to each entity.
There was a competitive bidding process on this one?
That's what she told me, yeah.
Just to remind the council, uh, everything you have before you tonight has already gone to public auction one time on the courthouse steps. If nobody buys it on the courthouse steps and the county takes ownership as trustee, at that time, anybody can come in and bid on that property. And that's what happened here. And you had multiple bidders, so we had a bid off, and the bid you have before you tonight is the highest bid. And, uh, council, uh, councilman, you're correct, uh, it's, it's my understanding that there has been damage to the structure on this property. And the, the land is valued at twenty-seven-five-sixty-three.
Correct.
I, I believe the structure will have to be demolished.
Yes. If you've written by there, yeah, it definitely does.
So with the land value, so what does that bring the, as far as up to what we're saying? Because there's water and sewer, we're looking at seventy-five percent is what we're looking at.
Seventy-five percent of the twenty-seven-five-sixty-three and she's offered thirty-six thousand, which is.
She's way over the hundred percent.
Yeah.
Does it correspond to both of these right here?
Well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the land is only worth twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand, exactly. And she's gonna have to pay for the demolition of that property, the demolition of that home. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, suit number S dash nineteen-dash-one-zero-five-one-TX, uh, legal description, account number seven-three-one-two-five, lots thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, block six of the Fricks first edition of Aransas Pass, in addition to San Patricio County, Texas, according to the map for plat thereof, recording, recorded in volume one, page sixty, map records of, records of San Patricio County, Texas.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna go.
Vicki didn't vote. No, no. I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, you said you gave us an update on this particular one. Do you have any updates on any of the other ones or just this one?
Just on that one, right now. That's the one that, uh, they lowered the value a little bit, but, uh, doesn't reflect the, the structure.
And that was the problem on the land value.
I'm just, I'm just questioning.
Yep, yep.
Mayor, your vote was?
Your, your vote, I didn't get your vote on that item.
Okay, now we're gonna go to seven-eleven. Okay, considering act on approving resolution on the proposed ad valorem tax rate of no more than zero point seven-seven-four-three-six-two-four-hundred valuation for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and setting the public hearing date for the City of Aransas Pass, proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three ad valorem tax rate on September sixth, twenty-twenty-two, with addition of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and fiscal year twenty-twenty-three ad valorem tax rate on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, as you can see, um, the, um, actual vote on the tax rate won't come until later and this is setting the hearing date also. Uh, staff, as we indicated, will look into a proposal that was made during this meeting um, and bring back a recommendation. Of course, you will have the final say on that. Uh, but I just wanna make it clear that, uh, the only thing that is finalized in this is setting the date, uh, for the public hearing. Would you, would you agree?
Correct, that is correct. We still have time to go ahead to lower that, if we can come up with that other penny, to go down to the seventy-six cents. This is, we're not committing to the seventy-seven cents as of right now. Like Mr. Edwards said, this is just saying, we're gonna have the public hearing on September the sixth and we're gonna be adopting the tax rate, whatever that rate may be, on, on September the, September the twelfth.
Okay, so the no more than wording, we don't have to worry about that, because that's, won't matter here. The word says no more than zero point seven-seven and some change.
In other words, we won't go higher than that.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
If, if we were to, what we present to you on the sixth, it was not gonna be higher than the seventy-seven cents.
I'll need to take a roll call vote once the motion and the second is made for this item.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the public hearing date for the City of Aransas Pass proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget and proposed year twenty-twenty-three ad valorem tax rate on September sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me take a roll call vote.
For passage of this resolution, Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmembers Albrego?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Scruggs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to consider an act and ordinance amending the Aransas Pass Personal Policy Manual adopted October twenty-first, twenty-nineteen by amending chapter nineteen, categories of pay and provided an effective date.
Let me kick this off, if I may. Uh, the, um, this item was discussed at a work session, so you are familiar with it. Uh, the next two items are HR-related, so the HR director is before you and can give you, uh, the, uh, some, uh, history and on both items, uh, this one and the next item also. So we'll begin with, um, uh, the personnel policy.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor and council. Um, like Mr. Edwards said, we did discuss this at the workshop session. Um, I will reiterate what I stated then. Um, on, on October twenty-first, twenty-nineteen, uh, the council approved the Personnel Policy Manual and I'm requesting a change to that, um, under the section nineteen, Categories of Pay, subsection B, that's Certification Pay. It currently read, "Payment shall only be awarded for those certifications that are required by law to maintain minimum standards or be a part of a progression for advancement within the same job category." I am requesting that we amend that too. Payment shall only be awarded to non-exempt employees for those certifications that are required by law to maintain minimum standards or be a part of the progression for advancement within the same job category. The reason for this request is exempt employees, um, exempt positions are expected to have those certifications and that was built into the salary that we selected for each of those positions. Do you have any questions for me?
And as a reminder, you approved the personnel policy, so any amendments you would need to approve also.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, amending the ordinance on the Aransas Pass Personnel Policy Manual adopted October twenty-first, twenty-nineteen by amending chapter nineteen, Categories of Pay and provided an effective date.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna go to consider an act and award, awarding the request for proposals for a compensation study, study to Evergreen Solutions LLC in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Like it states, uh, we did go out for bids for a compensation study. Um, we wanna make sure that we are, um, our salaries are competitive with the cities that we can compare ourselves to. And by that, we mean by size and budgetary restraints. Um, we received three bids, Evergreen Solutions, D.C. Municipal Consulting, and, um, the last was Keystone International. We did, we, um, do recommend that we go with, um, Evergreen Solutions because of their experience with municipalities, um, around us and the good track record, um, and references we've been able to acquire from them.
About how long do you think the, um, study will take?
Um, they gave us a turnaround time of two and a half months and that was one of the reasons we went with them. Um, Keystone did have a six-month turnaround and, um, D.C. Municipal, um, had a thirteen-week, but they were a little more expensive.
Can you explain to everyone what the twenty-fourth, or what this study is all about? Because a, a regular, a, a person that doesn't understand this might say, go online, look at the other cities, and you're done in about five minutes, for free.
Uh, yes.
So please explain what all of this is about.
Of course. So i- it's not just as simple as going and looking at their salaries. You have to make sure that you're looking at cities that are comparable to us budget-wise. Um, and then with Evergreen, they will even look at city, um, other position, or other cities that we've even lost employees to. We will provide them with that information. Um, so it's very important, they have those connections and they will outlook to upwards of ten different cities for us. They have that information, they have the algorithms that run with that. Um, and they give us a, um, a low point, a high point, and a midpoint. And you wanna make sure you're kinda falling in that midpoint and we need to gauge where we are. And if this isn't just information of just here in the coastal bend, it'll be statewide and we can even request nationally if we so choose. Um, but the ten cities that we'll probably select will be closer to us. That way, they're more comparable.
Do they look, I'm, I'm sorry. Do they look only at the pay or what else do they look at?
They can look at, so it's kinda like a cafeteria plan. Um, what we have asked for is pay. Um, but they do, they can look at a multitude of different things. On the memo that we posted, they even included in their, um, proposal that they have an option to look at, benefits. And we have had, um, complaints from employees saying that the benefits are a little too expensive. So that might be something that we're looking at, um, including in that. That way, we can compare what we are paying for our benefits. And by benefits, I mean health insurance and that sort of thing. And what those other cities are having their employees pay. Because they might be paying more for the, they might pay more hourly for that employee, but they might not cover health insurance at all. So that is a good benefit of looking at that as well.
I think, I definitely think benefits are a big part of the pay scale.
Yes, and that was only an additional, I believe, thirty-five hundred dollars, so.
And is that part of the twenty-four thousand, five hundred or is that in addition to?
It would be in addition to. That's not something that we requested, but that was something that they notated in their proposal that they had the capability of doing.
Yeah, I know.
Keep in mind the police department paying for this.
Right, I knew that.
Sky is the limit, in other words.
Yeah, just go ahead and open it up to everyone.
Well, that answers my question, so, thank you for reminding. Well, that answers my question, so thank you for reminding.
Is there like an equation in there for maybe positions that Aransas Pass has that other cities doesn't have?
Okay, you want to divert the questions over here?
Is there any kind of equation in this evaluation about positions that we, that we as a city of Aransas Pass might hold that other cities do not hold, like say assistance to this or assistance to that or is there?
That's the reason why we're doing that is to be able to match that left and right and make sure we're all even in the same boat, about what we're talking about. And that's the reason why we're doing that study, to make sure that they do this, they have so many employees, we have so many and whatever, whatever, how much everybody gets paid and straight up across the board.
Mayor, also keep in mind that we lose personnel right and left. We train them, spend thousands and they leave for higher salaries. That's another factor that, because we're losing thousands of dollars because we're so far behind many other cities.
Didn't you state that the police department's paying for this?
For the study, yes.
How's that?
They get a lot of drug money.
And drug money, you can use drug money for that?
State drug fund money, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anything else that I could clarify for you?
I make a motion to award the request for proposals for a compensation study to Evergreen Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Wait a minute, but we need to add the benefits to that.
Okay.
And you said that was thirty-five hundred dollars?
Yes.
So that would come to twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
Not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I second.
I'll do favor.
Aye.
Now we're gonna go to consider an act on approving a ground lease renewal extension to Sooner Towers LLC for the tower site located at one hundred east Ireland for an additional twenty-five years.
Twenty years.
Twenty-five.
Oh.
He says twenty years.
It says twenty years.
Mine says twenty-year years.
Yeah, but mine says twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
Mine has twenty.
Mine says twenty-five years beginning May twenty-third, twenty twenty-six and ending May twenty-second, twenty fifty-one.
If I may give some background on this, we've been going, staff has been working for a long time trying to get a better deal out of this particular relationship. Keep in mind that we have equipment on the tower on island, Ireland, I'm sorry, on Ireland and actually the company's getting a pretty good deal right now from the agreement we have with them, which dates back many years, I don't know how many years. We're trying to make that stronger. They would be paying, and Mary, tell me where I'm wrong, but we'd be, they'd be paying us upfront ninety thousand dollars and also they would be building and paying for a generator at the site. If our equipment went down, a generator, because of a power failure, a generator would keep it going. What else, what else is there, Mary? Is that?
And then would they add to the city as an additional insurer?
Yes, but right now there is no generator that would protect us and the amount of money we pay is how much? Or they pay, I'm sorry.
Right now they don't pay any.
They, that's right, they get it free of charge.
The only thing that they pay is the utility bill.
But they'll continue that.
No, they'll continue.
They'll continue paying the utility bill. Right now we've given, years ago, we gave it to them free of charge. That's no longer the case. Okay, thank you, okay.
Two thousand one.
So anyway, that's the, that's the new agreement and the other thing is they wanted forty years and then we kept, went away, hit down to twenty-five, it's twenty-five years. We said twenty and then they came down from fourteen to twenty-five, so staff anyway was agreement, was in agreement with that. So that's where it is. And want to thank the IT department and the police department and our IT department for being very helpful as far as giving it background information on, on this important item.
After the ninety thousand that they pay us upfront, are they paying us any additional each year?
No, no, it's ninety thousand cash.
That's just ninety thousand flat, okay.
Let's keep up the generator.
And the gen, well, the generator.
And the generator, yeah.
And they, and they maintain it, I, yes, they maintain it. It's up to them to continue that maintenance.
I make a motion to approve a ground lease renewal extension to Sooner Towers LLC for the tower site located at one hundred east Ireland for an additional twenty years beginning May twenty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, mine says twenty. Beginning May twenty-third, twenty, twenty-six, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And ending May twenty-second, twenty fifty-one.
Second.
I'll do favor.
Aye.
Now we're gonna go to consider an act on rescheduling the September fifth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting to Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two due to a city holiday, Labor Day.
I make a motion to reschedule the September fifth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting to September sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
I'll do favor.
Aye.
And all the monthly reports?
All the reports are written, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Okay, so then we go to city council staff, city council staff announcement.
Well, what you see there is just as a reminder, and let me pull that up, I'm sorry, the workshop meeting scheduled for August twenty-second and the state of the city this year is September eighth. There's always a good turnout because we work in conjunction with the school district on that, we're partners with them on that presentation. And both entities, the city and the school district are trying to make it a little special this time with some new twists to it as far as presentation goes, but there's a lot of good things to report for the city. Can't speak for the school board, but I'm sure there are excellent things there also, but for the city, some wonderful things to report on to the community at this annual event.
We're gonna go to citizen comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Jason Fallwell, three fifty South Houston, I love this place. So let me start with, with this. So Eric Blanchard, you took in a, an illegal warrant of my property, Roxanne, you were involved. Going after him criminally, but you, I'm going after your license. You were actually, made me really mad because you were actually on my side when all this started. You were the only city official to say that the fire department broke my Fourth Amendment right and instead of helping me, you got with them and raided my building. Shake your head no and I'll play the audio right now. That's what I thought. Eric Kelly and Eric Borrego, you two knew that you were fraud, the warrant was fraudulent. Kelly, you still came and raided my building under it. I publicly asked Mr. Blanchard for the information on the warrants, meaning I wanted the emails going back and forth to his peers on camera. He said there was no emails and then he went back and said, well, maybe there is and then he told me, I'll get them to you. Blanchard, you never gave them to me, I wonder why? Now, you never, after you didn't give them to me, I asked for Freedom of Information Act and asked to give them to, for y'all to give them to me and instead y'all sent me back Texas Code five-two-two, which I guess is coming from you, which basically says you don't have to send them to me, which is incorrect. Five-two-two is about criminal cases, meaning it has to be a criminal case for you not to give it to me. Mine's not criminal, you gotta give them to me, you got till Friday. Now, in a nutshell, an affidavit is a sworn statement of writing. Blanchard threw Borrego and you under the bus, by the way, Kelly. He said, you didn't even read the seven subpoenas you sent to me. It's funny. The legal documents are sworn under oath and it's sworn under oath by Judge Morales who signed it numerous, numerous times verifying the authenticity of it. Blanchard stated that this, it was a minor insight to the court and didn't even need to be corrected. Blanchard, again, it's an oath, just like you took to the Constitution, they're not minor, they're major. Mind you, once I publicly shared the information, Kelly went back and changed all the data. Borrego, if you're listening to this, I don't want you to get in trouble really, brother, so if you want some help, you can call me and I'll get you out of this situation, but under that's code, it's penal code one eight, one-one, one-one eight point one, which is a felony or a misdemeanor. Now, Ram, Ram, Jason Padron, Kelly and Borrego all signed government inspection forms that were falsified after the meeting. If anybody wants to look at them, I have them, I will gladly share them with everybody. Now that falls under Texas Penal Code thirty-seven point ten, which is tampering with government records. You gonna do your job? I just listed several misdemeanors that people are doing, which is class A and class B. No, gonna go after a pallet? That's what I thought. Before I leave though, let's talk about the mayor here. Class B misdemeanor, yeah, nepotism. Yeah, I'm talking to you. Class B misdemeanor is nepotism. Are you gonna arrest him because it's in your code book and it's against the law? And you know it is and he knows it is and he's been doing it forever. You still got John Goldmeds working for you? Nepotism, class B misdemeanor. You wanna pick up a pallet or you wanna do your job? Before I go, Ms. Carey, how about you tell Jason Knight he's a piece of shit and all she wants is him to go, him to go and her to go? Oh, she did tell me that, Jason. I don't know if you actually said that, but she did.
Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, I hear you record it every time I watch the year.
Mayor and Council, just to add, there is pending litigation in this matter and there can be no answers or responses without an Attorney General decision to do so on open record request right now.
Andrea, there is no litigation. I haven't filed anything on y'all yet.
We're done.
But go ahead and haul the data.
Any other comments?
Okay, we're gonna?
Be outside, guys, y'all wanna talk about this piece of shit.
Bye.
Okay, we're gonna go to executive session with the section five-five-one dot zero-seven-two deliberations regarding real property tax related to Harbor Community Plan and the six thirty-five. deliberations regarding real property tax related to Harbor Community Plan, and it's 635.
We're gonna reconvene in open session to consider and take action, if any, on any item discussed in executive session, and it's 658.